It is November 24th, 5:30, and this is the budget hearing portion. Do we need a roll call vote for this? Or no, no good. So now, we'll go through the different budgets here. And then, at the end of each of those three reviews of what the budget is, then I'm going to give a quick presentation because we've did some, a lot of information we've been gathering over the last two or three weeks. We're going to present that through the presentation. So. Right, that's why I think she's going to get started.
All right, sanitary district three's budget. Right now, total revenues are expected to be at nineteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty-three cents. Expenditures, nineteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty-three cents. We will be utilizing a portion of designated funds to balance that budget. Do I have anybody here from sanitary district three? Because only those members can vote on this and the board. Does anyone that is not a member have any questions? Okay.
We've emotionally.
Don't answer that. That'll be in the next meeting.
And then landfill, is that, you go through that first, Buchanan? Or how does this work?
Um, I don't know. Um, proposed revenues, um, fifty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-four cents. Total expenditures, we have the transfer of interest to the town, and testing fees of the same amount of fifty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-four cents. And a decrease in the fund balance to add, use part of the landfill funds to balance the general fund.
All right, and then the last budget. You quickly review that as well? Or do you want to go into the presentation? How do you want to work with it?
You can go into your presentation.
All right. So then, what I would like to do is, I said when I entered into this office, I was going to try and get into the details. I'm going to try and present what I find out. We, we were going through budget workshops. They didn't start until about the end of September. And then we were gradually going through a bunch of them in October. We discovered about a half a million dollar miss that we had come up with, that, that, like a cliff, we went off a cliff, a half a million dollar cliff or so. And that was about third week of October, I want to say. We discovered in a workshop over here. Uh, we quickly, I think, uh, clerk offered up a fire protection fee as an idea maybe. It ended up that we've gotten information back from the department of revenue. Well, we needed to get a rep, a budget together, put in a paper, so that we could announce it or notice it for fifteen days before we could have a budget hearing. We need to have all this done by.
I just have one point. It wasn't my idea. The fire fee was not my idea.
But, okay, you, you just brought it to the board that night.
The chief did, the chief did.
Oh, okay. Anyway, I'm sorry. Um, what, what point is, where were we at?
The deadline is December fifteenth.
The deadline is December fifteenth to have our information to the state for, to keep our, our government operational. We need to have a budget in place. So therefore, we were under the gun from about third week of October to get something done in a week. It was thrown out, let's look at a fire, uh, fee. We had the attorney look at it. We, we did ordinances so that we were able to do that. We found out today, I was doing some additional research over the last three weeks, trying to find out what, how all this works and what we should be doing. And we got, I came in this morning, we talked to clerk Buchanan. She made some calls, asked specific questions. If we lower the levy, uh, at this time, to be able to put a fee in place, does it lower it forever? The answer back was yes. The second thing that came back very interesting was, uh, we really can't levy for capital, or not levy, we can't use a fee for capital, is what I think the message said. So there's just a lot of variables that were moving at all through that time period. And there was a lot of people working very hard to, to get to this point. So what, what I want to do is go through where we are and show where we thought we were with the budget that was announced with the fee. And then I'm going to show what the budget looks like without that fee, which is going to be a, a primary suggestion from my point of view. But let's, uh, let's go to the next slide. So the, the, the first things I want to do, these are discussion topics for tonight. We have no internal capability for analyzing trending financial data. We don't have it internal to, uh, the town. It is, it, it's, there's, uh, at least I'm unaware of anything. We've never, I've never seen anything generated like this. In fact, we, we weren't able to even export internally to an Excel so we could do the analysis. I found that out in, like, July when I was trying to do this. So, uh, what you're going to see tonight was all hand input by me, and I asked my wife to help. Uh, so we did put a lot of information into Excel over the four years so that we could show some trend data, and I'm going to show that tonight. And you should have hard copies and there, uh, for those looking online, there is under news and notices.
Yes.
Uh, this presentation is there. So, and, and this presentation was still coming together at 3:30 today. So I just want you to understand, this is pretty late-breaking news to try and pull this together. We actually, uh, for twenty-six budget, um, we're buying a financial license for our business system, civic system, for deputy clerk, uh, Loaf, so that we can get her into the treasurer work and start understanding some of the business system because right now clerk Buchanan is really the only one that's able to be in there. And we also are getting, uh, we've authorized the purchase of OneView. It is an add-on that will happen in, uh, early twenty-six. And what it does is it allows for exporting of information from our business system into Excel or other forms that allow us to do manipulation. There are a lot of groups that actually even village, they create their own Excel reports that are generated each month, and the information is filled from the business system semi-like a click of a button. It'll automatically populate those reports each month, which will really save a lot of time for generating stuff. Uh, we're going to have, it's going to take us some time to probably figure all that out and get it, uh, in place. But we move forward with those activities so we can be a little more in control of our destiny because we haven't, uh, it, it's somewhat been, uh, the blind leading the blind in some respects here. Because the, the budgets that have been generated, we, we, uh, let me use. This, this is how we've generated a budget in the past. That's the sheet. You get this big long sheet, which is effectively a summary of what you get in the packet. But it allows for some budget planning on that side. And so what we do, uh, clerk Buchanan puts in numbers. She reads through all these numbers at the workshop. And then, we discuss. There's nothing, there's no analysis, nothing that we see more than this. And what I'm going to do is offer to you, um, my summary, you're going to be able to find from the sheets that you get in the packet. You should be able to see the information I'm providing. But again, this is not an analysis. And this is very hard to spot trends from, from, uh, year to year or month to month. And that's something we need to start putting in place. So, um, the, the next thing I'm going to put about three or four slides up, they're, they're going to be semi-busy, but I'm going to focus you on a few areas and we're going to move on. I don't want to spend a lot of time. The, the idea is, there has been fiscal, uh, I, I think there's been borrowing of operational funds, borrowing money for operational funds. I'll, I'll go through how I think, I, I believe that's the case going on here. Uh, so there's some fiscal things that have been done in the past. And again, don't shoot the messenger because I'm providing all this. I've been in office for seven months. And it's a lot of effort to get to the point to really start understanding what's really going on in our town. So what I'm going to talk about is the, uh, structural deficit. We have a revenue structural deficit year over year that is at least around a half a million dollars, the way it's set up right now. I've got some ideas of what we're going to tackle in twenty-six to deal with this. But it's the reality we find ourselves in as a third week of October. That's, that's where we are. It's been building for four to five years. I'll show you how that's been, I can show you how this has been building. And then the other thing that's very key for us, which I will go through a little bit of information, is we really haven't been doing any capex planning. So it's all been lumped into Fund 100. Very hard to isolate what capital is in that Fund 100. And what we are going to do is move to a separate fund for that. I'll go through that a little bit later. I'm going to show you some loan history, uh, what the debt service is doing over the last five years, uh, and then what the impact of the tax levy is. That'll be less, less impactful at this point based upon, um, our, our desire to move away from a, uh, fire protection fee. So, uh, the other thing I'm going to hit on is, we, we really took at that, uh, budget workshop, we all sat around the table and basically said, what can we do to cut spending right now? So there was spent cost, uh, like some cost that wasn't noted, you know, like, uh, compensated overtime or something that may not have been in the business system. But anything that we could control from that point forward, we locked down. And we were able to contribute some bottom line to help offset some of this. Uh, I'll show you that as well. I'll show you what's been going on in public safety-wise for us. It includes police, it includes fire, and it includes rescue. So, uh, all of those things, we'll show you how our costs have been semi-exponentially. And there's some things we need to look at in twenty-six to see, uh, what's going on. And hopefully make some impacts. I got two charts in there that I'm going to go through that should be helpful for you. And then, um, I have a summary of, uh, operational reduction, operational costs that, that I think are actions for, it's kind of our action plan for twenty-six. That's the objective. And then I, I have a comparable mill rate. I just, we'll spend two minutes on it. I just want to show you what we are relative to other areas. And then we can have some general discussion or it's just a data point for you. So go to the next. Before we move to the charts, the thing I wanted to make sure clear to the board as well as for you, according to town, this is different in village and city, the town board is responsible, legally responsible for the proposed annual budget. And they officially adopt the final version. So that's what our responsibility is here. So when we vote to approve that, that's our account, we're accountable for that. Uh, which is different in other municipalities and how they're structured. Now, the town treasurer function is the primary place that supports this effort. And they assist, uh, providing, uh, financial information, forecasting of any revenues, cash, historical data, uh, all during this budget season. But what we've been missing is there really hasn't been any preparation of charts, financial reports that show trending, uh, multi-year historical financial information. And those were the things I was trying to get a hold of when I was asking for an export out of our business system. So we created that, and I will have some of that for you. What, for the board's benefit, what, if, if we don't have that internal competency, then we are allowed to appoint either, and, and you're not appointing me. So don't, don't think that. Um, but you can appoint town staff, you can appoint a town member, or we can get a financial advisor to help us. And I think we've made a big step forward. Uh, I think I'll include some of these things with the RFQ that you and I have to work on for, uh, to go out for some financial advice. So I just want to, everybody to understand where the responsibilities lie and why we'd be looking to go to a financial advisor, um, for outside, uh, for help. So let's go to the first chart.
Shouldn't you ask the next question, please? Would you go out for an advisor and go to that with your issues?
No, we're not. Uh, we're using suggestions from, we had Dave Bredle in here from PAA. He had someone there, we had elders who.
So local?
Yeah, yeah, we're going to try and stay with, like, local municipalities, charities. We also have Baker Tilly, that they have a group that they, we can rely on if we want. So I'm, I'm kind of thinking of those three. Now, for business services, we don't need to take three bids and compare them and take a little bid. So we'll probably evaluate them for what, what they're going to provide and what kind of resources they can be for us. And then it's not budget right now. So we'll then have to have a discussion about if, if we're thinking we want to do this for next year, then, um, we'll have to find the money, so.
I have a really dumb question, but so if we lose the town pressure. I don't. Is there any other responsibility she has?
Right, and that's.
Clerk treasurer. Keep dropping the treasure.
That, that's why, so we've had a deputy clerk for four years.
Deputy clerk treasurer.
A deputy clerk treasurer, excuse me. Um, and we've had one for four years or better. And still, that person is not in the business system. And I don't understand why. We're getting a license, and we're going to put a plan in place, and we're going to ramp that up. One of the things, the audit, um, I, I'm going to try and keep this really short, guys. The, the audit has some issues that even talk about only one person is seeing the numbers. So we really need to have multiple people looking. If we have multiple people, if it's clerk treasurer, I don't know that we can get away from an auditor, but, you know, there's some things that, some flexibility that you have if you can get more people involved.
We are looking to balance a lot of duties, um, across the team. Appreciate that, anyway.
So, up here, I think it might be easier to get up here and just talk. So this is not intended to, we're not going to spend thirty minutes on this thing. What I want you to look at is the top is the revenue. The bottom is the expenses. And then this is where revenue over expenses. So I'm going to show you this chart later, but, so from twenty-two, we were overspending our revenue by twenty-nine, five forty-one. And it's right in those reports. If you want to look, there's a, uh, place on the back where it'll actually show that number. Then we went to twenty-three, and we're at one twenty-nine, um, two sixty-seven in the hole. So maybe we can hear. Yeah, I know. The people. Anyway, so then if you go to twenty-four, it's two eighty-nine. And then, this, I'm guessing, is going to be in the high three hundreds if, when we get done. Twenty-five is not complete yet, so you're, it's really not usually measurable for what we are doing here. And then if you go to our twenty-six budget, we're projecting at four forty-nine. And that's, that's what we discovered in third week of October. So, the purpose for this is to show you that the reports you have, or can get a hold of, should reflect this. But you're not going to see this in this fashion because that I had to put together. What I did over here for purposes of walking away with a presentation, you can see what capital, how capital is encumbered in the financial report if we just had it in Fund 100. So the objective, and I believe clerk Buchanan, we're going to have a Fund 400?
Yes.
This year, for twenty-six? Yeah. So what we're going to do is take all these capital pieces, and that's going to be put in Fund 400. So everybody's going to be able to see what is capital and then what is operations. Yes, sir?
Can I ask a quick question? Because everybody balances their checkbook, I hope, on a monthly basis. We give an annual budget, but these are actual real fund costs that we have. How have we balanced our budget from twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four?
Borrowed. It's called fund balance.
So we're borrowing that money that hasn't been going to people?
It, it's complex.
Okay.
I'm trying to simplify it, and we will get to sections. There's, we have borrowed or taken money to the tune of eight point eight million over the last eight years.
Okay.
I'm going to show you how we got that. And prior to that, we didn't take anything since 2013. And that was about eight hundred grand. So we went four years with no loans. And then all of a sudden, the bucket opened up. And for the better part of five years, it was six-digit loans. For the last three years, it's been seven-digit loans. And I'm going to show you that process. So if you just bear with me a little bit, we can talk about this. The, the thing is, for us, I, I, I want to balance budget. I don't, I don't want to, uh, put something up that we, we don't believe or we'd come in afterwards and come up with a number. So we made this budget, uh, balance by taking three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars out of the landfill. And we're expecting the hundred and twenty-four thousand from fund balance that we found this year to then offset next year. Now, this is not desirable. It's not a budget I want to sign up to. But we have to keep the government open, and I got to find a way to get us into twenty-six. And then I will show you the things we've got to do in twenty-six to figure this out and bring costs down and/or restructure debt and/or whatever. I'll have a summary of that that I can show you, all right? But this represents to me the deficit. And so if you move these up where they should be to balance this, one of the things that creates a problem is, we put a budget together, and then we've got comp time and these payouts that go on that are over and above the budget. So that's another thing, without having trends to show forecasting of what's going on, you, you don't know. You're seeing budget, and then you say year-to-date. It's really hard. And then I think the other thing is, how often are we updating the journal entries? How often is that happening? Is it happening on a monthly basis, uh, or a weekly basis or whatever? That also allows you to look at a budget and determine, uh, are we up or down? And should we put some control on this item because it's going out of sight? These are the loans on this, uh, the fees, which we're, we're not, we're probably, the board has to vote on it, but I'm pretty sure this, the information we found out this morning tells us we are probably not going down that path. And then the levy, there's two components to the levy that I think is important for everybody to understand. The top component, if you see where it's been, it's pretty much like right around one-three. It doesn't go anywhere very much. There's a little fluctuation. There's two components that had an impact on that. The state legislature backed it. I never looked up the actual date when this began, but it was around 2000 or 2001 when they put the levy limit thing in. I don't, I don't remember. But, um, since that time, wherever we were in our revenue or, or taxing, it, it got fixed. And so then we are limited to a certain amount of increase. And another piece is due to net new construction. And we really haven't had a lot of net new construction. And so that growth does not expand that top number very much. So you're going to see it, it remains pretty flat all the way through. It drops with a fee because when you check that box, it reduces your top levy. And it's one of the reasons why we don't want to do it, I think, as of tonight, okay? We'll explain it more to you. Um, the, the bottom part, if you look, uh, the debt service, four forty-nine, five seventy-nine, six seventy-two, seven ninety-two, and now eight twenty-six. When we borrow, so if we're borrowing funds which are on this line, each time we borrow those funds, now it goes into our long-term debt, and we're paying an annual fee to pay that down, principal and interest. And so that is what debt service represents. The levy limit itself is, that does not control debt. So what we hear from our auditor all the time is, well, you can borrow up to fifty million dollars. There's no restrictions, as long as you're in good standing, financial standing. Well, the, the issue is, though, it will show up on that line, and we all see it as a tax. It does show up. So, uh, I think, yes, go ahead.
I think how our auditor always presents it is like our credit rating, right?
Right.
Is a plus. We have the capability.
Right.
Of borrowing up. And being some credit rating, yeah. But to repay it, we'd be a draw.
And, and the way it's used, the connotation in the way it's used is like, oh, you aren't even close. You've got tons of loan. I don't like that. I, I just, I don't live that way with my own finances. I don't think the town should live that way. So that's the reason why. And can you click it over? I don't know if I'm going to try and just stay here. Yes. I don't want to get into this. It's the same chart. But what I did is, one of the things that became painfully clear to me is, we never broke apart what operations and capital is. So it's all rolled up in that Fund 100. And, um, it never really got broken out. So when we go to loan, like, for each year, uh, all I'm trying to convey is what, how the process worked, what is in the actual budget? Because these are all, these three years, uh, these two years, since I added a second one here, I did take twenty-two off. But for these two years, they're done, we're at the end, we have final numbers. So all these yellow numbers are actual capital. Now, you're not going to capitalize, not two ninety-two. But those were the lines we used in here to say what are capital because we really didn't have a way to do it otherwise. So then I stayed with that and went across. So if you look at where our financials are showing potential capital and where we borrow for, you're going to see that we're, like, in this case, for fire and rescue, this is one of the biggest problems that sort of exacerbated this, uh, us finding this issue. We're borrowing three hundred and twenty, but the capital that's in our finances is only a hundred and ten. So th- these are the things that tell me maybe we're borrowing for operations. It's really hard to assess that by looking at things. But you can see, we're up, we're up higher than what our capital is. We had a town hall project for the police garage. That's, that's happened here. And I'm, for the life of me, I don't understand how we didn't capitalize that. And so it came out of funds in the town budget. I think there were possibly transfers from the landfill fund. I, I can show that later. But I just, again, I'm just looking at the decision-making that was done in the past. Here, we got a two thirty-one, uh, for twenty-five, and I'm only seeing forty-five, seven eighty-five this year. I don't know if we have another payment or not. So it's really hard to use, uh, two thousand and five as anything. It's year-to-date, and so there might be payments that haven't been made yet. The best place to look here is, we have a ladder truck in, um, in the budget for fire, and I'm not quite sure what this is.
Amulets.
And it is an ambulance, okay? So these two are the capital items that are on this year that are, that really caused us to want to focus on how can we just not borrow so much? And that's why we went to a fire protection fee thinking we could do it. We found out we can't even borrow for capital. And that was this morning. So, uh, I'm sorry for the late-breaking news, but it's just, we've been seat of the pants trying to put this together and keep it moving towards December fifteenth to keep our government open. So if you look at how. So if you look at how, what, what effectively happens on this sheet, the fire protection fee, we were looking at offsetting our borrowing by 601 with the fire protection fee. Well, we're, we really can't do that at this point. So therefore you take that out of there and now the loan value has to go up. Now that is adjusted downward because our levy limit went up. You can see 1, 2, 5, 6 went to 1, 3, 5, 8. The big issue is the levy limit is limited forever, never changes. And I've heard from people where they try to be fiscally responsible and do this kind of thing, only to find out they lost millions of dollars over multiple years because they lowered their level. So they couldn't levy it. So this is really all I'm trying to convey here with this report is where I think we've been probably borrowing for operational costs. I think we also have been probably applying fund balance to this because when we were in the, the workshop, right, the first workshop or second, when, uh, when the auditor was with us, she said we had about 130,000 in fund now. So that's like, if you're a private industry, it would be owner's equity or, uh, what's the term? There's a term for it where it's kind of value that you have as an owner. It's value that we have as a town and it can be used to offset these expenses. It's simply like, like your checkbook and if your balance gets too low, you don't, you don't have any checks to write anymore. Can you flip? Any que- questions or?
Yeah, but are that town hall building expenses, is that still ARCA funds?
Oh, ARCA's words.
$100,000.
I meant to go find the ARCA schedule and I didn't, I didn't have time.
I got a question.
Yep.
On that last slide, if we wouldn't be addressing this now and trying to get a balanced budget and we kept borrowing and borrowing, would eventually we have to raise taxes like through the roof?
I think you'd default. We would have to either go to referendum and say, like we were talking about, there's a couple of, you know, options you can look at. You would go to referendum for like police, fire, and rescue and say, and so the only way to do that really is to do the projections. One of the, I'll get to the slide where I tell you a little bit about what we're doing for capital planning and it may become more clear there. But if we had a full schedule for 20 years, which is probably what a ladder truck like is, and then you lay it all out, what are the expenses? And then level load that every year, what do I have to put away to pay for that?
You should be budgeting for it.
We, that, that amount, that level load amount should be going into a designated fund.
Right.
And this is for, for three years, I sat in those chairs. And the reason why I'm sitting here is because I, I, I wasn't being heard. And I was at the last November '24 budget hearing and probably talked for 20 minutes about the unsustainability of borrowing for, and then I also, we talked about the ETA/ESD formula and how that worked. And there, there was just, there was a lot of head shaking, yes, that, yes, we kind of agree with you, but we haven't been able to do anything about it. So that's, I'm, I'm gonna try and do something about it. That's, that's why I'm here. Is that-
Yeah, and, and that was some of the stuff that Dave Brettle was saying, that you gotta start budgeting for things that are gonna be on your horizon.
He also made a comment about a dangerously low fund balance. That should not be 100 or it should be up a little.
Okay, thank you.
And part of the fund balance was used to pay for, I believe, I, I don't know, part of the town hall or something. There was fund balance used for some of these costs. Quick, just a quick slide on our loan. Up here, I wanna point out that this is the schedule I have of information. May not be completely off the bay. I definitely didn't add '26 on here, which is gonna be 2 million. But if you look at the date, 5/8/2013, he took out a 10-year loan for 720,000 bucks. And then we sit for four years with no loans. And then we went nuts. And what my problem is, this is the part that I was trying to bring to the, to the board when I was sitting out there, is we're, we're sitting here with six-digit borrowing going all the way through about '23. Now we're into seven-digit borrowing. And now this year, we're gonna be at 2 million. So now we just clicked over that mark. It's, it's unsustainable. We can't keep up doing it.
Yeah, you can't do that.
We can't do it. So, um, if we continue to increase, we've been hitting it every year. And so our balance, so this is the part that-